Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Fayette County School Board and Trustees Business Meeting. We are here at Connorsville Middle School. We're very excited to be in a different location. I would like everybody to rise and those in the seats will turn around. The flags up in the back of the bookcase.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then Mr. Todd, do you want to introduce? Are you scared of us tonight?
Well, I want to welcome you all here to the middle school on behalf of everybody. Nice to have you sometimes and it's sort of nice to have the fire. Mrs. Clifford has brought some fire members out this evening, so they're going to start us off. Thank you all for coming. I really appreciate your willingness to do service. Take it away.
Thank you for inviting us to be here with you. First, we'd like to sing our national anthem, so if everyone would be willing to rise and face the flag. Thank you. You may be seated. We just shared our Veterans Day program this past Friday, and one of our favorite songs is called "Thank You Soldiers." Thank you. Students, you can head out this way, and we can move the piano up to the side if you'd like, or...
I don't know how that gets up.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, when is the birthday of students?
Are they going to Pacers?
Oh, December 20th to the Pacers in Indianapolis.
Singing the national anthem at Gabriel Fieldhouse.
Lots of lots. Thank you as much.
Thank you.
Okay. It's always nice to begin with that, but it kind of makes me now want to go home and go to sleep. I'm very glad to say. Okay, I would like to seek a motion to... Oh, Mr. Todd's going to continue and tell us more about middle school.
Yes, very much so.
It won't be probably...
But that was some... If you were at our Veterans Day program last Friday, you got to hear some excerpts there, and then mark your calendar for December the 7th, because we'll have the winter choir concert. All right? So I just want to bring... I just want to bring a couple of things to you. Here in just a little bit, we're going to take a walk back in time, but before we take a look back, I want to take a little bit of a look forward or a step forward a little bit, because I know in the past couple of meetings or two meetings ago, there was some concerns about middle school test scores. And please, I want you to know that we have those same concerns at our end. We're not happy with where we are. We have put a lot of things in place this year to try to make some drastic changes from that standpoint. So I do want you to know that. We've had some teachers meet even over in the summer. We have a core group of teachers that are working with... I'm sure you're familiar with EES. And we are putting some things in place so that we can hopefully make some changes. We're not happy where we are, and we do want to move forward in a positive direction. We're really looking at some research-based information as far as research for John Hattie and Marzana, which I'm sure you've heard before. And we're trying to figure out how can we... What we're doing doesn't appear to be working, so we have to change in order to get the kids to change. So we are in the process of doing that right now. We have teachers visiting other teachers' classrooms. I'm a big proponent of learning from other teachers and learning their craft and learning what goes well, what doesn't go well. And so there's a lot of those types of things that are in place. We've kind of even gone back to the basics and talked about what's our mission here at the middle school. And we're getting in the process of putting it all together, and then once we've got that, then everything needs to reflect what we're doing. It's not that we didn't have a mission before, but I just don't think it was a shared mission, so we thought we'd go back to the drawing room a little bit. I've had teachers ask me, "Where's the data from last year? I want to see where my kids are right now." So we pulled some stuff from 6th grade. Where are we at? Which kids are our bubble kids? What can we do to get them the help that we need? There's co-teaching that's going on with our specialized department and our core classes as well. We're working on cross-curricular units. Typically, that's something we do every year before High Learn rolls around, but it's also taking place this semester as well. I've got teachers who are going to be visiting the high school to find out what it is they need from us, and so we're trying to put some things together, talking with not only just the people in this school, but the other schools in the corporation as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, or if you want to talk with me afterwards, I can go into more detail with some of the things that we're doing. But we've got some learning walks that are going to be kicking into gear here soon, where I'll be stepping into classrooms, but teachers will also be stepping into other teachers' classrooms and learning from them and just trying to become better at what they do. So any questions or concerns from that standpoint? Hopefully, we'll have some more information later, but please know that that's going on. We are trying to make some drastic changes from where we ended up last year. All right. All right. I'm going to just move on. We're going to take a step back in history here just a little bit, because I don't know if you are all aware. I've known about it for a couple of years, but the building that you're sitting in right now is going to be 100 years old this school year. So I'm just going to just show you just a couple of things about it. So if you go over to the cornerstone, you'll see the cornerstone has 1923, and that cornerstone was laid way, way back when in September of 1923, and those were the tools that were used to put that cornerstone in place, and those tools are on display over by the Meisner Auditorium. So those are still there. So I'm going to give you a little context. Sorry, I'm a former history guy, but let's go back in time here a little bit. 1923, 1924, which is when this building was built. Ronald Reagan was 12 years old at the time. Richard Nixon was 10. John F. Kennedy was 6. And George Bush and Jimmy Carter have just been born as of the time this building was built. As far as economics goes, the average American household income is $2,200 when this building was built. If you wanted to buy a new house, it'd cost you about $7,700. A new car was about $500. Gallon of gas, can you believe it? 11 cents a gallon. Talk about the good old days right there. Those are long gone. Loaf of bread was 9 cents, and a first-class stamp was 2 cents. Calvin Coolidge is our president, and this building was built. Walt Disney Studios has just been formed as of this particular year. The NFL is 3 years old right now. There is no such thing as a talking picture yet. That won't happen until 1927. Yankee Stadium has just been built. The Lincoln Memorial has just been completed. Charles Lindbergh has yet to cross the Atlantic. That won't happen until 1927. The Empire State Building does not exist. It won't be built until 1931. Women have had the right to vote now for 3 years, and there's no such thing as a television or a transistor radio. How we ever survived back then, I'll never know. And if you're cruising the roads outside, you would have seen cars that were made in Connersville. The McFarlane, the Auburn, the Lexington, the Accord, all of those are cars that were made here in Connersville, Indiana, and they're out about there cruising the countryside. So if you go down by the auditorium, once again, there is the memorial plaque that was put in place when the building was built. And then the building was officially dedicated on October the 24th, 1924, and that was the picture that was taken that night. If you were to go outside and take a picture of the building, that's pretty much what it looks like still to this day. This is looking south. This is what the original structure looked like. So you see the long building there, which is where all the classes are. Then the building to the left is the gym, and the building to the right is the auditorium with the smokestack. I've heard stories about the smokestack and an incinerator at some point, but that is what it looked like back then. This is what our school board looked like in 1924. Those 3 jolly gentlemen right there were our school board members. There were only 3 back then. And then Mr. Collins, if you want to know who your compatriot was, that was Superintendent Edwin C. Dobson, who, I don't know, maybe he's the longest-serving superintendent, I'm not sure, from 1921 to 1946. And there is a plaque on the wall down there for him as well.
Some super force, Scott.
If you would have come to the front door, that is what you would have seen. That part of the front door is now covered up because of the renovation that was done in 2004. Those light fixtures are still in place, but obviously, that's what our front door looks like today. That was what the corner of 19th and Grand looked like way back in 1924, certainly not very much different from what we have now. This is a second-floor hallway from when the building was built in 1924. All right? Pay particular attention to maybe the water fountain on the right, okay? Because that's that same hallway today. That's what it looks like today. And now we have a handicapped, accessible water fountain there, okay? This is what's now the Meisner Auditorium. This was state-of-the-art back then, and if you'll kind of take a look at the... especially the light fixtures up top, because that was 1924, here is 2023 right here, okay? So it's really not changed dramatically. All those light fixtures are the original light fixtures from way back in 1924. And most people don't know, and I only noticed it a few years ago, if you go to the balcony and you look at the seats that are in the balcony, they still have CHS etched in the side of all of those. So that's just a little tidbit of history that's kind of out there. And I'm sure you've all seen the mural that's been painted or flanks both sides of the stage in there. Those were original from 1929, 1930 is when those were done by a very well-known Indiana artist by the name of Oakley Ritchie. They are on canvas. They are 8 foot by 11 foot, and they have been cleaned twice since the building was put together. They were cleaned for the last time prior to the Meisner Auditorium being dedicated. So the left panel is Greek drama. It's supposed to personify with Sopocles in the center and some other characters around him. And then you probably recognize William Shakespeare there. On the right with some characters, Falstaff and King Henry, Romeo and Juliet are in there as well. The last time those were appraised, each one appraised for over $100,000 apiece, and they're still in pretty good shape today. The Meisner Auditorium was dedicated... We all know who he is. He was the one who created the first high school van. He started his career in Connersville and also ended his career in Connersville before passing away in 1967. And I didn't find out... Mrs. Clifford gave me some information a little while ago. He's also quite the inventor. There are, for example, things that are named after him. This contraption called the Melody Bells and the Meisner Phonoscope, had no idea. So we're hoping to put some of these things on display in the hallways down by the music center here at some point. All right? A lot of these dealt with teaching kids, how to teach kids about music, music appreciation, those types of things. All right? This in the... that yearbook is Room 206. All right? That's Room 206 in 1924. This is Mrs. Brooks's science class. All right? That's what it looks like today. All right? So certainly... Pardon? What's that?
It was Mrs. Kirchner's social studies class.
And it was Mrs. Kirchner's social studies class as well. There you go. Room 206. Yeah, I didn't find that in all of the...
Well, it's okay.
In all of the research. All right? Here's the original gymnasium. Pay particular attention to the rafters and those steel posts right there, because if you know where you're sitting, that's where we are today. This used to be a gymnasium before the renovation way back then, okay? Here's the football team from that particular year. They had a 5-0 record, and they also had 2 ties. And this was around... This is around like 1930, and they had just dedicated a place called Play Pool Field, which is just down the road here a little ways. There are your basketball... There's your basketball team, the Spartans. They had a 10-11 record of that particular year, but they really, come tournament time, did a great job. They made it all the way to the semi-state. They lost to Kokomo, and Kokomo went on to win the state title that year. There is no such thing as Title IX, obviously, back then, so there are no girls' sports, but there are plenty of girls' clubs, and this is a girls' literature club from that time period. And then here is the glee club from that particular time period in some very gleeful-looking jackets. I wish I could get my hands on one of those maybe. I didn't find out till later that there was a fire in this building in 1931, which pretty much gutted the whole thing. I don't think I ever found out what caused it, but if you look through the top windows there, you can see there's pretty much no roof. So where do you go when your school is in bad shape like that? By the way, that fire took place 1 month after those murals were dedicated and put in the auditorium. So they were taken down, and they were saved before some damage was done to them. So as it says there, from October of '31 to April of '32, all the CHS students went blocked that way, and they went to what was the middle school back then, and they did that every day from 12:30 to 4:40. And then it was finally redone. There is a plaque, especially in reference to Veterans Day. There probably aren't too many schools around here that have a plaque memorializing people that served during World War II. So that's down there by the auditorium as well. And then obviously, 1957 is when the bowl starts to be created. So these are just some construction photos. Those are the brackets for the seats there. And then that's just as the bowl roof is going on there in the top-left part of the picture, not quite completed in '58. That's kind of the beginning of it, right before they dedicated Spartan Bowl, and I think that one is still around to this day, obviously. It's still quite the centerpiece for this building. Here is a building... Or here's a picture of a hallway about 60 years apart. Students on the left from about, I think, 19... early 1950s and current day. And then there's also... This is over by the auditorium. You can see the arched kind of doorways there, still the same, but now we have a handicapped, accessible ramp to the right side there. I came across the school song from way back when, and I thought this was kind of significant just as we're looking back and also looking forward. It says, "Let us always keep a memory of our comrades far and near, for they helped us on to victory with a right goodwill and cheer. There are greater glories surely in the days that are to be, so we hold our faith securely till our ship comes in from sea." So not only looking back, but looking forward. And so we've got 100 years in this building, which I think is pretty impressive. From our standpoint, we've got a great legacy, but we certainly have a bright future ahead of us. We're thinking about probably having a little bit of an open house in the spring, so just we'll update you on that. But certainly glad this building is still in shape, certainly a historic building, and we very much appreciate it. A lot of corporations might have dozed a place like this years and years ago and built something brand-new, but it served us great, not only for the high school, but obviously the middle school as well. Just wanted to let you know you're in a 100-year-old building. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause) That was fascinating. I really enjoyed that. Okay. I would like to seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
Do that, Lori.
Thank you, Jeremy. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Now's a moment for public comments. Take your comments on agenda items. Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of 10:10:23. The personnel report that includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of October 2023 claims, 66158 to 66445. And donations. A donation of a 2008 Hyundai Santa Fe vehicle valued at $2,000 from Larry and Susan Hamilton to WCC to be used as an educational learning tool for both auto collision repair and automotive technology students. A donation of 6 AEDs valued at $9,475 from Reed Health to replace some units and adding new devices to our facilities. A donation of $1,750 from Reed Health to CHS Athletic Department to be used to help pay for some athletic equipment supplies. I would like to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Now we will get on to action items. Let's begin with the personnel report. Mr. Harris.
Get used to me tonight. Personnel report. Recommendations on employment for classified staff. Recommending Mary Conkleton as the Head Start Nurse. Chad Holland as custodian at Fayette Central Conroy High School. Michael Perrigan as maintenance. Cassie Pope as a special ed assistant at Frey Z. David Sickles as custodian at Grandview. Extracurricular certified staff. Jason Floyd as head varsity baseball coach. Classified staff. Conrad Alston as assistant wrestling coach. Stephen Kiefer as boys swim coach-coach. And Rusty Page as boys swim coach-coach.
I would like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report. Hi, Selma. Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion? I just have a question about the swimming. It said "boys," but are they not doing all those?
They're doing all, yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
I thought I knew that, but just wanted to... For the public, yes, that. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries.
Jason Floyd. Jason, would you stand... Want to congratulate you on formally being approved as boys baseball coach. How many years have you worked or volunteered in the program?
21.
21 years, so...
Yeah.
Really excited. There's a lot of really good momentum going on with the program and a lot of great athletes that hard work with the kids in high school. Say congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Program's dear to my heart. Been around a while. Just want to keep it going and be there for the kids and give them opportunity to be successful and enjoy their high school career.
Jason played on the last team to win a 2-game regional.
Oh, he was our coach.
Was that in '23? 1923 or '24?
Good job, Jason.
Jason, you've volunteered for 21 years?
Yeah.
Any thought of back pay?
I'm doing what I love right now.
Oh, okay.
Good answer.
Good answer, yes.
I'm good.
Thank you, Jason.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, Mr. Harris of the collective bargaining.
This comes from the meeting. We had the meeting last Tuesday, and now I'm formally recommending approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the FCSC Board of School Trustees and the American Federation of Teachers Local 2205, AFL-CIO.
Okay. I'd like to seek a motion for the approval of the teachers' collective bargaining agreement. Hi, Selma. Thank you, Ann. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'd just like to say that I really appreciate all the work between admin and the teachers and the union, because everybody seems to work well together. There's a lot of listening, and I think we're very fortunate in this district that we have such good relationships with our teachers and our teacher union, so... Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Okay, the tag local funding.
This is one we usually come before the board every year at this time. The Indiana law dictates on how we have to handle the tag grant, and the state law requires that highly effective teachers receive 25% more than the effective teachers. Our past policy, and based on this recommendation, current is that we should be treating all teachers effective and highly effective the same. So additionally, the Fayette County Board of Trustees approved a policy that outlined the tag distribution for the state guidelines back in September. I'm recommending that the board make up the 25% difference through local funds, so the highly effective and effective eligible recipients are paid equal amounts. The equalization cannot come from the tag per Indiana law. Therefore, I'm requesting approval to make up the differential between effective and highly effective certified staff through the use of local funds. The distribution of these payments will be paid per the board policy within 20 days... 20 business days of the receipt of the funds. So far, we haven't received communication from the state on when we will be receiving those. Typically, it's around the 1st of December, and we usually get the tag money out either the 1st or 2nd of December based on when we receive the money from the state.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the teacher appreciation grant local funding. Thank you, Jeremy. A second?
I'll second.
I heard Lori first. Give that to Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor sit in the pipe by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. And on to the approval of the classified staff administrative staff performance stipend.
Hey, this is one of those we usually kind of wait till we finish up the collective bargaining with the teachers and then move from there, but there's 3 parts to this altogether. Stipends. First off, I'm recommending that all classified and certified employees not cover it under the collective bargaining grant and receiving the tag, which we just approved. We'll meet the eligibility criteria, proceed the stipend on the December 8th, 2023 payday. The stipend amount will be $500 for all eligible employees, and it'll be based on the following criteria. Actively employed within the school district in the '22-'23 school year, working on minimum of 120 days. They are not on a non-FMLA leave or absence exceeding 30 days during the current school year. Actively employed with the school district on December 1st of the school year, and they can't be eligible for the tag. I am also recommending salary increases to non-CBA certified licensed positions. These are our educational diagnosticians, speech-language pathologists, and social workers. I'm recommending that these positions that are licensed through the state of Indiana but excluded from collective bargaining. The compensation amounts are listed in Attachment A, and these are similar to the pay increases from the collective bargaining agreement, ranging from $1,000 to $2,575. The pay increases will be retroactive to... The pay increases will be retroactive to July 1, I should say, 2023 on that one. And then the final portion of this is recommendation on administrative staff. I'm recommending all administrative staff excluding the superintendent who meets the listed requirements, receive a base salary increase on Attachment B. These include administrators employed on or before September the 1st, evaluated as effective or highly effective through performance evaluations, not, again, not gone from non-FMLA leaves, and actively employed in the school district on December the 1st of 2023.
Thank you, Randy. I would like to seek a motion to approve the classified staff administrative staff performance stipend and base salary. Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion?
Randy, everybody in essence is getting it right. Correct.
There's some that don't.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you meet, if you.
Somewhere there are yeses with stipends and everything else.
Yeah, we've covered.
Yes, we covered classified staff back in August, and then the teaching staff and administrative staff, and then those that are classified staff with professional licenses. Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. On to the approval of the tax levy resolution.
This is revolution, resolution based on, we know there's going to be changes, particularly with everything else coming this evening yet, but I'm recommending approval of the Resolution 2023-18. This resolution is adopted by the Board of School Trustees, whereas the Board of School Trustees recognizes the extraordinary circumstances occurring within the school budgeting process and where the Board of School Trustees desires to review and limit the impact of tax levies upon the residents of Fayette County, and whereas the Department of Local Government Finance will allow certain reductions in the advertised tax rates to occur. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of School Trustees recognizes there may be adjustments that are required or otherwise mandated within the budgeting process that must be honored. Be it further resolved by the Board of School Trustees that at such time as the 1782 notice of tax levies is issued, a review of all levies will be conducted to determine which adjustments, if any, are necessary or required for the continued operation of the school district. The board further authorizes the superintendent and/or director of operations to make the necessary adjustments to any and all corporation funds within the Department of Local, within the Department of Local Government Finance Guidelines.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the tax levy Resolution 2023-18.
Give that motion.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Laurie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. This is the Randy Harris Show tonight.
Yeah, I told you.
Let's move on to item F, approval of the installation of water and sewer lines.
This one, I am requesting permission to install water and sewer lines to the CHS athletic facility at a cost of $139,368.86. The work will be performed by Powell Plumbing and Electrical. Thank you for consideration of this request. Also to let you know, we received another quote on this of about $180,000, and we requested permission, or we requested a quote from a third company who refused to provide a quote. So, this was the low quote that we were seeing for this project.
It's local business.
Yes.
Ann, is this because the current lines are not in good shape?
The part is a combination of things. Partly, the lines coming in from the high school are old and not in the shape that we want them to be in. Also, by doing this, it really sets us up for additional renovations even out there, whether it be a new locker room, additional work football fields, a new baseball diamond. So, we're looking at all of those, and they also, we've worked with the city on this quite extensively, Darryl has, and we also think that it will help the water pressure situation a little bit, especially out to that area. There's some other things the city's going to be working on over the next couple of years, but we also think this will help with just the water pressure to keep it up and make everything work better and run better there.
Is this to correct those ugly pipes we saw a few months ago?
It doesn't replace those. This is really bringing it in off of Mary Kay Lane. So, it's coming in, it's all new off of those, so it doesn't totally replace those. Those will stay in place for the time being, but eventually, we would hope that we can extend this on out there.
Okay, so this is the beginning of the process to get rid of the really?
Yes.
Bad stuff.
And just something for the board, we had a water leak behind the Career Center.
It's been.
The condition of some of these lines, it's something we're going to have to invest a lot of money in, and this is that first step to push water out, because our water actually runs from the Career Center out to that area. And I was shocked to see those lines, I mean, this is part of old facilities. We're going to be replacing a lot, I would guess, in the next five years as these lines deteriorate.
They were about 12 foot deep?
Yeah.
And the gas line was about two feet above it?
Yeah. Wasn't it good design? Our guys did a great job on it, though.
Wow. Well, thank you for that. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the installation of water and sewer lines.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. On to the digital video equipment.
This is one we've been, as we continue to look at how we're going to school, to spend school safety grant funds from the state. Been approved for this purchase, but I'm requesting permission to purchase digital video equipment to enhance the current video systems located in the school district. The new equipment will expand and upgrade our existing video equipment. CEI will solve the equipment at a total cost of $99,940, and again, this is going to be paid from the school's safety grant.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the purchase of digital video equipment. Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. On to the purchase of the Little Spark preschool bus.
This one, I am requesting permission to purchase one 22-passenger bus for head start. This will be purchased using head start funds, not normal school district funds. The cost of the bus will be $110,635. We use Central Indiana Educational Service Center. They actually do statewide bidding for all school buses from Indiana that wish to use this. Honestly, Darryl and I, we've talked about it. The order will go in this week, and we will get the bus sometime. Right now, we are, we were supposed to get a bus, what, in October, then we were told November, and we are still waiting on it. So, buses continue to be a, well, hurry up and wait situation, but we expect honestly it will be somewhere between 16 and 20 months before we will see this bus.
We're 18 months in waiting on the bus that we haven't received.
And they sent the same bus we spent $92,000 on last time.
For the same bus?
Yeah.
So, they provided why the delays. They're just all backed up, and they can't get parts either, and they can't get them out?
Is this an additional bus or replacement?
We're doing a replacement for one of them that's got more miles. We'll back it up, too. We'll trade in one of the old ones and take one of the 15s off the street.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the purchase of a bus for the Little Sparks preschool. Thank you, Laurie. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. And the approval of the Resolution 2023-13 for the governmental authority to use the Fayette County buses in case of emergency.
Mr. Collins, please sub for me.
Oh, yeah, this is for you. Sorry.
This was mine. We were contacted by our Homeland Security, wait walling about using buses in the event of an evacuation or an emergency in the county, and right now, there are certain stipulations without board approval where buses are very limited on how they can be used. So, this resolution permits us to send out our drivers and buses in the event of an emergency where there's some evacuation or moving of people. So, this just gives us official approval. Our attorney said we should have this in place just to be safe. So, that's why I'm seeking approval for this resolution to go forward. You know, we won't have to approve it every year, so it'll just be in place.
I think that's a great program.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. I'd like to seek a motion to approve Resolution 2023-13 to use the Fayette County School Corporation buses in an emergency.
Hi, Selma.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Jeremy. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. And Mr. Collins, again, parking lot management.
We're giving a break here. So, there has been a verbal agreement in place for about 11 years with the Grand Avenue United Methodist Church. Prior to that, there had been a written agreement. It expired in 2012, and I wasn't aware, and Darryl wasn't aware, so we were contacted by a member of the leadership at the church. They were wanting to get some striping and sealing of that. So, Darryl was able to find the old agreement, so we had our attorney work on this just to update it. We met with representatives from the church, and we rely on that. It's a parking lot right across from Spartan Bowl, and we need it for staff parking on CMS each day just because the parking is so limited. And then also, it's used for graduation for various events. They will allow cars to park in, uh, for basketball games, and it's a little bit of revenue for them. They have people that work that, and then we will maintain them with snow removal and then the sealing and painting of the lines. It's too late to do it this year, but with your permission, we'll continue that partnership. This is a three-year agreement. We don't know what the future holds with extra parking that may become available around middle school in the next few years with Reed, so I chose to go with the three-year, and then we can always re-up it then, but we just want to have something in place that provides those stipulations. So, we've had a great partnership with them, and I commend the gentleman who met with us, and they've taken it back to their board, and they're supportive of this as well and would sign off on it. So, we appreciate them allowing us to use it for events, and we will in turn take care of the parking lot maintenance.
All right, well, thank you. And I'd like to seek a motion to approve the parking lot agreement between Fayette County School Corporation and the Grand Avenue United Methodist Church.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Laurie. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Okay. All right. We are now going to begin the hearing on the lease as identified as item seven on the board agenda. We are required to hold the hearing for two purposes. The first is for the hearing on the leases, the second is for the additional appropriation of the bond proceeds, both related to the projects Frazee Elementary renovation and Connerville High School pool renovation. The School Corporation will receive money for the sale of the real estate to the Building Corporation. Since this money was not initially listed in the School Corporation's annual budget, the School Corporation is required to hold a hearing for the additional appropriation of those funds. The School Corporation is funding this project through lease financing as it has done with other past construction renovation projects. Lease financings are used by school corporations across the state of Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. The Building Corporation will purchase a portion of the elementary building at the closing for at least the appraisal value. The Building Corporation will then lease that portion of the building back to the School Corporation. The lease rental due from the School Corporation will be paid from property taxes and will be for the lease of the building during the time, term of the lease. The lease rental, as shown as a maximum amount in lease, will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest due to the bondholders. We will now open the meeting to the public for a hearing on whether the lease rental contained in the lease agreement is fair and reasonable for the construction or improvements being made. If anyone would like to make public comments related to the lease hearing, please notify us at this time. Not seeing any notes, so we will move on to the resolution authorizing execution of the lease agreement.
So, close the hearing.
We, oh, yes, I guess I'm closing the hearing now. Closing public comments time and turning things over to Randy to explain each of the resolutions.
The first resolution there, as required by the school leasing statute, after a hearing, the school board must approve the lease and authorize the officers to execute such agreement. This lease is the agreement whereby the School Corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments. The lease payments will be paid to the Building Corporation and used to pay the bondholders. Without the lease, bondholders will have no assurance that the Building Corporation will repay the bonds. The lease is the mechanism by which the property tax collections can get to the bondholders.
After hearing Randy's explanation on the resolution, I'd like to see if the board has any questions or comments. None, seeing none? Then I would like to seek a motion for Resolution 2023-14 authorizing the execution of the lease.
Can we give that motion?
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Okay, Randy, we'll get on to the next resolution.
The next one is the additional appropriation resolution. After the additional appropriation hearing, the school board will adopt the resolution which outlines the appropriation of funds received for the sale of real estate. The resolution also specifies that the funds will be placed in the School Corporation construction account, separate from all other School Corporation funds until the project is complete.
After hearing Randy's explanation, any questions or comments? And I'd like to seek a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-15 appropriating the proceeds and establishing the construction plan. Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Mr. Harris.
The third one here, the Building Corporation will own a portion of Frazee Elementary School building, but the Building Corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. The bond proceeds will be held by the trustee bank and will be used to pay the contractors for the work done on the building. As a result, construction bids and contracts will need to be with the Building Corporation because the Building Corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The School Corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, but then assigns those bids and/or contracts to the Building Corporation.
Okay, you've heard Randy's explanation. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to seek a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-16 assigning bids and contracts to the Building Corporation once they're received.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ryan. Second. Thank you, Laurie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Mr. Harris.
I want to interrupt the agenda just slightly. We talk about the Building Corporation. I don't know how many people know about it, but actually, the Building Corporation met yesterday morning. Three gentlemen have served on the Connersville Building Corporation as members of it since, best we can figure, about 2000 or 2001, and I just want to thank Jim Powell, Dave Mackey, and George Morris, who've continued to do that. All three of them unanimously agreed when they agreed to do that 20-plus years ago, they never imagined that they would still be the Building Corporation and going through their, they've asked for a couple of changes to it, and they'll take care of that, but I just want to publicly thank the three of them because they have given a lot over all of those years. But the last resolution with that, then, the Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a school corporation enter into a third supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. The School Corporation has previously entered into this type of agreement. The agreement requires that the School Corporation agree to timely provide certain financial information to the SEC's AMA database and provide notice of any material events.
Any questions or comments for Randy? Seeing none, I'd like to seek a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-17 approving the supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of the bonds.
Can we give that motion?
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, post sign, motion carries. Now, I'm turning it over to Scott.
Thank you. We made it. So, we have some gentlemen you're familiar with, with Tim Funston, with Skilman, and Chris Kingery, with Dalton. I know Chris wants it just for the public.
I know Chris wants, just for the public and for you, just to update where things are in this process for folks who may not realize. So, Chris, I know he has some information he wants to share just to get us to this point now where we're at now that this is completed.
As a continuation of the project hearing that was completed on October 10th tonight would be the second reading of that. Presentation is very exact to what was presented on October 10th. It would be the board president and superintendent, if you would like us to go through that presentation, that same presentation?
Do we need to? I don't know that we need to unless the board feels they need to, and I think the public got to see that, so.
We didn't get any negative feedback from when it was presented previously.
Right. But would like to give an update on design, not from visual standpoint, but just from the planning standpoint, so you know the meetings that are happening in between the meetings. And we have established a weekly coordination meeting that is between the school system, also with Skilman, and also with Gibraltar. Each week, we're bringing different topics for exploration. So as we have our architect stick deeper into the construction documents and the planning of that, we are making sure that we are finalizing those details, vetting out every single, you know, specification to considerations for the elementary school in Frazee and then also the pool project at the high school as well. Rotation agenda is done each week, and when we do that, we are inviting different experts in the fields, you know, eventually Frazee principal, along with those closely connected to the high school pool as well, to just make sure that we are getting more input as we go through the process. As we get design updates, we will bring that forward to you in future meetings so that you can kind of see. And Skilman is also there at every single meeting to make sure that they remind us of the budget and making sure that they remind us of the schedule so that every decision that we make is aligned to our end goal, which is improving Frazee Elementary, creating that benchmark for elementary learning, and then also updating and enhancing the pool advisable. Any questions for Tim or myself?
I think just was, we had a meeting today, and something Tim, I thought maybe highlighting that, a process that they are conducting in another district not too far from us. We have a limited pot of money, so we have $6,105,000 total for each project, and you can't use, you can't enter mixed funds. They're two distinct projects. Out of those will come the soft calls, the architectural calls, the construct. But within that, then, we have a limited pot of money. And something you just want to share, sometimes you uncover new things and.
Yeah, absolutely. So obviously, we go into these projects, right? Eight years the baseline, so we're talking about classrooms, et cetera. And these are the things we want to do. Along the way, if we find items like a roof or a wall leak, right, we take that and prioritize it to make sure that we're taking care of the envelope. Let's say, last thing we want to do is make, you know, have water damage to something that we just installed here. As we go through that process, Gibraltar will develop line item scopes, so we'll have A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And as we keep meeting with the groups, we will take those items and prioritize them. We'll put a dollar value to that, and then we'll see where the, you know, it's kind of think about a yes, no. So above the line, we can afford it. Below the line, we can't. And then we keep a couple of those below the line to either bid as alternates or make sure that we're trying to maximize every single dollar within that pot of money. So it's pretty interesting. We'll share some of that as we go through, especially as we kind of round out the scopes into each classroom and different areas that we're touching. And so it'll be, it'll be a pretty fun process, I think. We're using it right now in Blue River Valley, and it's definitely, everybody has more needs than they have money. And so going through that process is very educational in my opinion.
We use that strategy, we call it creeping up to the budget, to make sure that we protect expectations, and so no one leaves disappointed, to make sure that everything on bid day, we know 100% is going to be into that project. And that transparency with the board and community as well, so that they can see what that end result's going to be. What I like about the bid strategy of having those alternates is, you know, the idea that on bid day, you have favorable bids, and you're able to bring more into that project as well. And if not, what I also like is that we'll have a line item, actual bid on a scope item that could be done now or in the future, and you know exactly how much that would cost. So a lot of win-win situation.
Bid day's exciting. I mean, that's completely transparent. We'll probably book it over in the admin building or something. Those are dropped off. We literally rip envelopes, open, right, read it out loud, do it over teams, and then record that whole process. So it's a very, very open, public process that everybody can participate in.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any questions for them?
There's no aha moments. Once we start the project, there will be so many steps along the way. We won't get three-quarters through the project and say, find something and say, oh, we don't have the money for this because you've already done your homework.
So the best part is, two years ago, when you brought us on to do the facility study, we were looking to make sure that we understood what those aha moments were. And then also working with your facilities team as well to make sure all those, everything is accounted for, that the exciting things are going to change in the building, and also many things that are going to cost money to fix that aren't as exciting are covered as well. And then also, as Skilman does the budget, they always carry contingency for protection throughout the process.
As we talked about, when we went through our school tour, and we found things in there, I mean, same deal, we're dealing with 100-year-old items. So, you know, you pull up a floor, and there's a wet spot, and you have to figure out what it is. Well, it's a cast iron pipe that, cast iron doesn't last after 100 years. So we will have what we like to call budget protection to handle some of those items. Once again, those line items will be extremely clear inside the budget, and you'll understand what those costs are.
That's been a problem with some other projects in the city and the county previously, and we don't want to have to do that.
And then the interesting part is, just kind of strategy, as we go through, we will give the board reports. And so if there's a pot of contingency, and as we progress through construction, if we haven't used it, maybe we can go back and pick up one of the alternates. If that's a flooring upgrade or a scope expansion or something like that, we will end up utilizing those dollars as we go through construction.
Good.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board. Comments which involve personal or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we're going to move on to superintendent discussion group reports. And just for the board, that would be, because I, we always go through that, nobody ever says anything, that would be if you serve on a committee and you want to share anything with the board about what's happened in the committee that you've been with, that's an opportunity. So principal director reports. We've got several. Go ahead.
The CHS fall plays this weekend. If you're out and about, the Adventures of Sherlock Holmes Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 and Sunday at 3:00. Tickets are $8 for adults and five for students.
When did you say on Sunday what time?
I'm sorry?
Sunday what time?
Break, yeah.
Last week, Everton, like the middle school and our other schools, had a Veterans Day program. It was very well attended, but what made it meaningful was the help we received from the Fayette County Honor Guard. So I just want to thank them. And this week is American Education Week. There were all kinds of activities going on. Tomorrow is Spirit Day at Everton. We have a book fair going on, and then we have grandparents' lunches Thursday afternoon.
Kelly Duncan has Spartan Elementary Center open house tomorrow at 3:30 PM as well.
I'm on lightning day today. So I didn't get to the last board meeting, but I wanted to make you aware, actually, you know, this last board meeting. The Student Athletic Council put on a track retreat on October 28th at the track, and we have quite close to 1,500 little kids that came to that event. And I think all of our teams ran out of candy at some point. So I think that was a great opportunity for our kids to get out of the community, and we're hoping to do more things like that. We are still working with Fayette Central. We are going back on November 28th for integrity, so our kiddos are presenting on integrity. And I think we're going to go back in December and maybe do some kind of caring, maybe make some Christmas cards for the nursing homes in the community with Fayette County. So that's our SAC. One other thing that I wanted to bring to your guys' attention is, we have put on our website the Athletic Hall of Fame. We're trying to get that up and rolling. I brought with me a stack of nomination forms. We're really hoping that we can get the community involved in making nominations. We'd really like to get nominations from some of our older, you know, 19, 23, 24 teams, but we're taking all nominations. And then eventually, I will be reaching out to see, I do need a volunteer from the school board to be on the Hall of Fame committee, and so, and some people from the community as well. So that's kind of our process moving forward. But if you're interested in helping, reach out, or if you would like to grab a form or want to take a couple to pass out, we plan to have them at basketball games on the table and some of our events, so people can grab them. But there's an online form also on the Connersville Athletics website. So hopefully, we'll get some nominations, and we can get that rolling this spring.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody else?
Baseball field is going real well. Looking forward, and congratulations to Jason. We'll start working more and more together on it. They start the lighting project tomorrow, start digging, so a lot going on there.
On the athletics, we also Jasper and.
Jasper Martin and Kaylee Semberg were MVPs of their respective teams for conference.
Thank you. All right. Director of Operations report.
We have the funded report in front of you. Continue to go well. You will probably see some notices that some of those funds, particularly Education Fund and Operations Fund, not dropping significantly, but they will be dropping in the next month just due to the fact that some of the pay increases and those things that we have done over the last few months, but looking shape there.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent report.
I just want to echo what Brian said. I went to see a lot of the veterans program. The Honor Guard was at each one of them, so they were very busy last week, and we appreciate them supporting our students. And then also for American Education, we kind of just want to thank all of our teachers, staff, for all the great things that they do for kids.
Superintendent's report.
Just a reminder, tomorrow, or Thursday evening, is the regional school board meeting up in Hagerstown. So I know we have several board members attending that. Echoing the veteran, I don't think we can say enough about our veterans. And I talked to the gentleman, the Honor Guard gentleman, when I was at Grandview, and I thank them for their service, but they were so complimentary of our schools and thanked me for, to thank our staff and our administrators for teaching kids the importance of veterans and honoring them. So it was a really nice five-minute conversation I had before the program started. I just appreciate those gentlemen for taking the time to do that. It's really nice. We had some success at our National FFA Conference. I know Victoria Caldwell finished sixth, which was really outstanding, and.
And Robby. And then Corin Nabi, an eighth grader.
Eighth grader. So I just want to commend our FFA teachers and the kids and their parents for, we have a lot of success in that program, and kids are doing great things there, so I want to acknowledge those folks for that as well.
Anything for the good of the cause tonight?
Basketball season has started. I'm a happy camper. Our Lady Spartans, if you have not seen them lately, go out and watch them play. They're hustling, they're learning, they improve every game, and they're just a lot of fun to watch, and they're in action tomorrow night at 6 o'clock over in the Spartan Bowl. My middle school kids have started. They won their first home game last night. The seventh and eighth grade white teams are happy campers. On Thursday night, the CMS red team plays Union County, which typically you throw out the records because they don't like each other very well, and play, typically play pretty hard. So basketball, and we had, the Spartan Arena was almost full last night with parents supporting our middle school athletes, which bodes incredibly well for our high school programs. When you can fill the arena to watch seventh and eighth grade, particularly their B teams, we're doing something right in the athletic department, and a lot of credit goes to Andrea for that and some of the innovations that she's doing. We just have a lot of kids participating, and the more kids we have participate, the better off we are, because if they're busy doing the sport, they're not busy doing stuff they're not supposed to. So come out and watch them. It's a lot, a lot of fun. And again, Lady Spartans tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, center field, Andrew?
Yeah.
Yeah. Should be, should be a lot of fun there. Shayna is doing, Shayna and her staff are doing a great job with the girls this year. So, and basketball season for the boys, of course, starts the night before Thanksgiving. So that's always a special event here in Connersville.
Thank you, Ann.
I would like to echo Andrea did on the trunk retreat. It was, that was great. The lines were long, but you got the kids through fast. Any suggestions? I'd like, so maybe more athletes and more candy. I brought my great grandchildren. They're very selfish, so I didn't get much of what they got, but we had a good time.
More athletes, more anticipating, I don't think, 1,500 kids. And so when the whole baseball team all was handing out a piece of the candy, yeah, they were the first team that ran over and stole candy from me. Tennis came over and stole candy, because all the kids wanted to give candy to every little kid, and then they ran out really fast. So we have written down notes, and we will make it better next year.
It was great. That was great.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? With that, I would like to seek a motion to adjourn, Mr. Hunt.
I make a motion. I will second.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion, I mean? All those in favor, signify by raising, what?
Location of our next meeting is at the.
The December 12th meeting will be in the administration.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign.